In just a second, we've got some agendas coming. This is gonna be a town hall meeting, new school and old school. We're gonna be trying out a technology that we've just gotten. So you'll be the test group on something we saw from one of our consultants. And our commissioners liked it and wanted to try it tonight. So we're gonna be talking about two subjects. We're gonna be talking about the West Tarpon Avenue and citizen input of what you want located there. And we're gonna be talking about the COVID funds, the ARPA funds as they're known, and what you would like to spend it on. This is strictly to get information for me as the city manager to take back to the commission. And there's gonna be plenty of more opportunities for inputs on both these subjects. So this is a start. How we're gonna start out each subject is we're gonna have a presentation, a short presentation by staff. Then we're gonna go to the phone polling system that we've tried. So all of you have your phones, get them out, because we're gonna be ready to set you up for that system. We've got paper copies here. If something happens with the phone, you can't get it, your phone doesn't work. We've got paper ballots to fill out, so don't worry about it. And then if you're frustrated with it all, don't worry, because the last segment of each item is an old-school town hall, where you get up to the microphone and hopefully in three minutes or so, you just tell us, you know, what you would like the money to be spent on, what you would like at the end of West Tarpon Avenue. So there'll be plenty of ways to do it, so don't get frustrated as we do a test. We've run through some practice rounds and it's worked pretty good, so hopefully. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ally here to try to get everybody's phones set up so we're ready for that portion. Let me turn it over to you and see how this goes with the setup.
Okay, so I see some familiar faces. So I know some people have maybe tried this in the past. So it's gonna be the same link and process as before. But if you pull out your phone, there's two ways to participate. One is through the web address and one is through texting. Our recommendation is to use the web address. We just think it's a better user experience over texting, but you can do either option for the live polling. So in your phones, if you want to, this is how to get onto the website, is to open up your internet browser, so your Google Chrome, Safari, whatever browser you have. You're gonna open that up. And then the URL search bar, where you type in a web address, you're going to type in pollev.com/kimy353. So it's the blue, the top blue statement. And then you'll hit Enter, and it should take you either to a screen that says to join the presentation, or one that says waiting for the presentation to begin. And that's how you would get on for the website. For texting options, you are gonna open a new text message. In the spot where you would type the phone number, you're going to type 37607. And then you're gonna go down to where the message body is and type in kimy353. So that's the bottom blue text on the screen here. Once you hit Enter, you will get a text reply saying that you're entered in the presentation. And once a question is available, you'll be able to send your response. When a question is live, it will automatically appear on your screen if you're using the web browser. If it's live, you'll be able to send a text message with the letter of your answer. So that is the basic way to get involved. We'll be getting into this a little bit later in the presentation, and we'll walk around and help you guys. Does anyone having any issues right now? Okay.
It says waiting for Kim, beginning 353 presentation to begin. I'm in the right spot.
You did it perfect. Yes, so it'll automatically pop up. All right. And again, if we have some issues, once we get into the questions, we have paper copies and we can add those into our results. All right. So I think with that, we'll turn it over.
Again, thank you for coming here for what we're calling the City Manager's Town. What?
Oh, can I say one more thing? Just in the event that anyone that's watching at home, you will be able to participate in the survey questions. We recommend watching the presentation in full, so you're aware of what we're talking about. There's different terminology. But after we conclude the meeting tonight, we'll put the survey live, and you'll be able to take that survey at home. And it'll be available until Tuesday, February 22 at 8:00 a.m. So I'll repeat all of this, but I wanted to let everyone know.
And that's very important. So your friends, people you know who are not here, you know, we need their opinions too. So bring that information to them, tell them to get on. Like she said, it's gonna be up till Tuesday. Again, the more information that we have for the city commission as they reach these decisions in the future, again, there'll be plenty of more chances for citizens' input. So this is just the beginning. So we'll start right out, I guess, with our first item. And the first subject we're gonna talk about is West Tarpon Avenue. Most of you, I'm sure, if you're here, know the story of the Sun Bay Motel, the city taking control of it, leveling it. And you all see at the end of Tarpon Avenue of the land that we have there. So Karen Lemons, I wanted to start off with a presentation of where we are so far and some things we've done and some ideas we've got. There is no predisposed city position on what is gonna be there at this time. That's why we're looking for input. So I'll have Karen start, and then we'll get into the first phase with the questioning.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mark already gave a little bit of a background, but I wanted to start by giving some background on how the city acquired the property in the first place. It's a little over half an acre. In 2018, the city purchased the Sun Bay Motel through the CRA, our Community Redevelopment Agency, and we demolished the motel. And then shortly after that, we leased the adjacent property. That's the Sun Bay, and this is the rest of the land. We leased that, that contains a 500-square-foot building. We wanted to be a little forthright in controlling anything that would or wouldn't go on that property. So that building was been used as a satellite office for the police department, economic development and planning. And then in November of 2020, during the general election, there was a referendum question on the ballot asking residents if they would like the city, again through the CRA, to purchase the property. And that referendum question was approved. So the city then acquired it. And that small building is being used now as our Community Redevelopment Center and the Economic Development Office. So when the city acquired the Sun Bay property and demolished it, we started doing our community engagement, asking people what they'd like to see there. We received a grant from Forward Penellas to do a highest and best use analysis. And what that would look at is specifically data-driven on what would be the best use for the property. As part of that, we also had two public meetings. One in December of 2019 and one in February of 2020. And that was to get input from the residents on what they would like to see at that property. So out of the public input and the highest and best use analysis came four main ideas. One would be to develop the property with a mix of commercial and residential. Another idea came to specifically do a residential project on the property and then to move the Safford House to that location and/or end to create a public park. So those were the four main ideas that came out initially. So then we did some initial public engagement, and starting with our Connect Tarpon Springs Community Engagement Platform, which we launched a year ago in February, yeah, February a year ago. We put the project on that website and asked, what would you like to see on this property? We did two ways of engaging that. We did a quick poll and an ideas board. The ideas board was open-ended. You could go in and just type in, this is what I'd like to see there. You could upload photographs or pictures. And then the quick poll, we took five categories and it was just a simple one question, what would you like to see? And as you can see from the results, about 60% wanted park and open space, 17% retail restaurant, 11% lodging, 10% civic, and just under 2% residential. And then for the ideas board, we got a lot of comments on that, a lot of creative ideas from our residents. These are in no particular order, nothing in here is in any particular order, so I don't wanna, you know, think that. What we did is I took the main ideas from the ideas board. You can go on the Connect Tarpon Springs website and see each of them in more detail. But the ideas ranged from a boutique hotel to a natural park, meaning a passive park where there would be landscaping and benches, but not a lot of activity. Mixed use, again, some combination of commercial and residential. A park as a gathering area, so more of an active, an active park. Some of the comments were to have an event lawn, food vendors, mini golf, entertainment, skating rink in the wintertime, music gazebo. Essentially, a very active park, we'd have a lot of activities. A civic space or a town square. Something you would have, public art as maybe a main sculpture, some native plantings, interpretive signage, where they would explain what those plantings are. Museum, a couple ideas were museums, whether it's history of the city or an epiphany museum, since epiphany is held right there. A wedding venue, a community garden, a community youth center, parking lot, and then a skate park. So lots of ideas, and we appreciated all the input that people gave. Some people did upload photographs and put some designs together on some of these. So out of all of that input, starting back in 2019 through today, we saw four categories emerge, and again, these are in no order. But first, to develop the property, whether it be residential or commercial or a combination thereof. To move the Safford House to the location. To develop a public park, whether that be an active one or a passive one. And then to have it as a civic space. Civic space, meaning it could be a government-owned building, whether it be a community center, a recreation center, a museum, a town square, anything that the city would be owning and managing. So with those ideas, we've created some polling questions for you. And once we go through the polling questions, then we'll have the open presentations where you can get up and give us your thoughts too. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Ally to walk you through the live polling.
Okay. So here is that instruction slide again. Is anyone having difficulty getting on the site or joining the presentation at this time? Does anyone need a paper survey? Okay, if that changes, just let us know and we'll pass one out or help you with any issues. As far as the format is going to go, I'm going to show a slide that has the question and the answers. And then, once we read that out, I will put up a slide that goes live, and then you'll be able to vote. On the website, again, the screen should automatically update. For texting, once it's live, you'll be able to send in your answer. You can only submit one answer, but you do have the opportunity to change your answer if you would like to do that. And you can do that either through texting and/or on the website. And again, for anyone watching at home, these survey questions will be available after tonight's meeting and available until Tuesday next week, which is the 22nd. Okay, so we're gonna just do a practice question, make sure that everyone is working properly and having no issues. The question is, who is your favorite Tampa Bay sports team? Is it A, Buccaneers, B, Rays, C, Lightning, D, Rowdies, or the E, the Tarpon Springs Spongers? All right. Let's see here. All right, the question is now live, and you should be able to submit your answers, and we'll start seeing things on the screen.
Ally, can you remind them that they may have to scroll over?
Yes, and depending on the size of your screen, you may have to scroll on the website to see all the answer choices. So you may have to go up or down. Anyone having any issues? You guys are experts. Good job. All right. Looks like the Spongers took it home. Good job. Support the local. All right, we're gonna go into the questions now. Again, this will be just a question. I'll let you know when the question is live. All right, what is your top choice for this property? And just so you know, you will be asked for your second choice. So right now, we're looking for your top choice. A is development, so it's residential, commercial, mixed use, or a boutique hotel. B is a public park, active or passive. C, civic space, gazebo, public art or monuments, fountain, civic building or museum. D is move the Safford House, and E is none of the above. All right? All right, the question is live. It should automatically refresh. Yep, you may have to kinda pull your screen down to refresh it. Yes.
I have a problem distinguishing between public park and civic space. One has a building and one doesn't.
Somewhat. So civic spaces, so we put some of the examples up there that were, you know, has something on the site. So it could be a museum, it could be a civic building. It could also just be monuments or statues, things like that. A park is more so gonna be, you know, recreation-based and/or, like we talked, for a more active, like an event space.
And again, you'll get to clarify it when we have the time. When you come up to the mic, you can clarify, you know, which one you'd like to see if there's a distinguishing between the two.
All right, we'll just leave each question up for just a minute or two to allow people to get their answers in. All right. Okay, I think we'll go ahead and close this one. Oh, there's still movement. All right, we're gonna close this one. Okay, so now we would like to know which would be your second choice for this property? The same answers is A, development, B, public park, C, civic space, D, move the Safford House, and E, none of the above. And the question is now live.
Not as a command, this is just A, B, C, but they'll, they're all, they're all public parks.
Good job. All right. Let me go ahead and close this one. Question three, if this property were developed, which type would be your preferred choice? A, office or retail, B, restaurant, C, residential, D, mixed use, E, boutique hotel, or F, none of the above? All right. Okay, question four, if this property was to be a public park, which type would be your preferred choice? A, passive, which is mostly landscaping, walkways, or minor amenities. B, active, so recreation, event lawn, music. C, a combination of A and B, and D, none of the above? All right, you guys are pros. This has been the easiest run of this yet. Okay, question five, if this property was to be a civic space, which type would be your preferred choice? And this is other than just landscaping. So A, gazebo, B, public art or monuments, C, fountain, D, small museum or other civic building, or E, none of the above? Okay. Go to the next one. All right, question six, if the Safford House were to be moved to this property, what is the maximum cost the city should pay to do this? A, $300,000 or less, B, $500,000 or less, C, $750,000 or less, D, any cost, or E, do not move the house? Okay, go to the next one. Oh, that's it. All right, that concludes the live polling for this presentation. Keep your phones out. Once we go to the other part of the agenda, we'll pick it back up and you don't have to go to the site again. But with that, I guess we'll open up to ideas and comments.
Yeah, Ally, I wanna thank you. I wanna thank planning. This, we had about, this meeting, I think, was gonna be in January, and we needed some time because we just had to get the technology in. We had to work on it. We had several practice sessions in here, and there was a lot of hard work getting to this. Again, this is our first try. We're gonna refine this. There are more things you can do with this technology, more advanced things. This is kind of rudimentary. We get, just hit the basics so far to see how it'd go. And believe me, we had all kinds of nightmares about how this might not work and stuff. And I wanna, I wanna thank this crowd because it went very well.
Tell you, pros.
It was great. So now, old-school town hall, please, in three minutes or so, come up. And again...
Before we jump into that, can you just remind, for anybody that's watching at home, that they'll, if they didn't get into this the first time they do the polling, that they'll be able to do it...
Yeah, I was gonna go at the end after that too, but that's... Go ahead, we'll do it a lot of times.
Sure, okay. So yes, again, anyone that might be watching at home, we suggest watching the entire presentation. The live survey, well, the survey will be available until Tuesday next week. It will be available to get onto it at home once this meeting is concluded. So, and there's contact information in the description. If you're watching on YouTube, there's a link to get to the survey. And then there's contact information if you have any issues. So, there you go. Now I'll turn it over.
So whether it was on the questions or not on the questions, input from the public for the commission on this area and what should be done with it, come to the mic. And again, we're not timing it like a commission meeting, because this is a town hall. Come up, give your comments, and we'll take note of it.
Good evening, I'm Cindy Terrapani. I live at 22 North Spring Boulevard, within about 150 feet of the site. First, I'd just like to say thank you to the staff for doing this. It's really unusual. It's a great idea, I think, to, you know, get public input in a different way, in a good way. And so I applaud you guys for doing that. And I think it's great that you're gonna have it on the city's website too. Couple... Couple of comments. First of all, I think everyone knows historically, there's never been commercial on the bayou. Not in the historic past, not in the recent past. It's been purely a residential area. So I think we need to be really careful about that. Number two, it seemed like there wasn't a lot of support, at least the folks here tonight, about having a private development on the site. I think we really need to be careful about that. We've used CRA public money to purchase these two properties and to then allow that to benefit a private citizen, a private developer. I think is fraught with all sorts of conflict issues and problems. Number three, when the Ford Penellas, I forget the name of the group that Ford Penellas hired or the city hired to do that economic analysis, it was pretty clear from their analysis that a commercial development, a mixed use development that was analyzed is not going to be financially viable. Due to the size of the, the size of the property constrains how much you can put on the site and the amount of development you could put on the site versus whether it is financially successful. It just didn't make it. So that's, I think, another thing. We don't want to have a failed property sitting right there on the bayou to create a problem. But most importantly, my most important comment is, and I think I provided this to the city some time ago, but I'll send it again because I think Renee wasn't here at the time. There was a study done by the same people who did the Ford Penellas study which showed that a system and a series of open space and parks in a community has an extremely positive economic impact. And that economic impact is felt in property values throughout the city because people come here and it's a desirable place to live because there is that system of parks. It also stabilizes property values nearby, the actual park itself. And it provides, as I said, there's some other economic benefits. I can't remember all the reasons, but I'll pull that out and send that. But there, a park system, although, or a park development on the site, whether it's passive or active, like we talked about tonight, has the potential to have a very positive impact on the community. So I think we ought to, we need to include that as part of the analysis. Thank you so much.
Lucie Anne Robinson. I agree primarily with what Cindy commented. I would also like to add that we have so many properties in town that are ripe for redevelopment, that are sitting idle, vacant, that I would hate to see this really important centrally placed property developed. I like the park idea, the civic space. This could be a real place of respite among the development of downtown and the surrounding hardscapes and streets and parking lots. This could be a real public square. We could honor our native plant heritage. We could have a crackerjack piece of public art that would be a gathering place, a drawing card, and generally a place of celebration. Thank you.
My name is Victoria O'Hara. I live right near the Spring Bayou and I'd like to piggyback off of what she had just said about being a celebration. There's a lot of celebratory events that happen down there. There's proms, Tarpon Springs High Proms, there's the Epiphany, there's the Art Festival. So there's enough, there's some beautiful celebrations that take place. And if that piece of land can be used to enhance the celebrations as far as just gathering and keeping it a community, open space. We have, again, we do have enough that has been built here. A lot of vacant lots that need to be utilized. So once there's a building on it, then that's it. There's no, there's no other decisions being made. So if we keep it open, it surely can be a place that'll enhance, enhance the area and as well as the community in that area, especially the people who live close by. I live half a block away as well.
Thank you.
Anita Protas, 901 Bay Shore Drive, and thank you for this opportunity. When we first had our first public hearing at the library, at that time, I turned in a written analysis of the property for moving the Safford House. It is a historic preservation area. It is the highlight of our community with all our big homes. And the reason I ask that the Safford House be moved there because it's not being utilized and it's like a museum for the community. People don't get to see what happened there, who the people that made Tarpon lived there. To move the Safford House would be the corsage on the Golden Crescent of our historic homes and our historic preservation in the area. I also gave you ideas of what could be done there. We have many weddings there on the bayou. It can be rented out as a wedding reception venue. I gave you names of restaurants that were interested in putting in bids on food and refreshments. We can use it for the Women's Club, the Garden Club, the Bridge Club, all the clubs and entertainment groups that we have here in Tarpon. And we can also put your art in the yard there when it's done with the characteristic of the Safford House. We shouldn't lose our historic, what we've got. And I know that you've had people come and look about moving the house, what the cost would be. And you could sell the property if the city wanted to sell that property where it is. Put that money in a fund and let it grow for preservation of the Safford House. I think we need to keep our historic and we need to put the Safford House there for the history of our community and for the young people to know what Safford stands for. Right now, no one goes there. They have a hard time finding the place and it's not being utilized. So I am hoping that we can all work together to help raise money, to help the city. There are grants. If the right grant writer is hired by the city to get grants for the Safford House. Money's tight, but there's still money in Tallahassee. And you can also maybe get some federal money to help preserve in federal historic preservation. So we need to bring out the merits of the Safford House being moved on the bayou to keep what we have and not lose another opportunity for something good in Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Good evening. Dolly Vaticiotis, 538 West Cedar Street. Thank you very much, City Manager, for having this opportunity for public input. I would like to commend what Mrs. Protos said and I'd like to support what she said. I was a docent at the Safford House for over two years and I can tell you that it is terribly underutilized. It is a beautiful building. It has tremendous historic value. I understand there's a cost involved in possibly moving it, but it is a gem. It really, really is. I gave tours and I'd have to tell you, it was only open two days a week. And if we had five people come on any given day, that was exceptional. It is something that would add to this location if it were able to be moved. I would support that. Thank you.
Hi, Craig Lunt, 743 Chesapeake. Again, I'd like to echo the thanks for having this meeting. I think we need to do more of this in the community. I think we're tending to silo some of the responses, though. I think it could be a combination area. I've talked to, I don't know, many people in the community. So far, the idea of maybe having a gazebo with some tables and resting places in that area seems to work. That wouldn't necessarily dismiss having music in the gazebo. It wouldn't necessarily dismiss having, excuse me, public art displays in the gazebo. The existing building there could be used for providing refreshments. Many suggestions I got suggested like an ice cream shop or something like that. Might be a little bit of a litter thing, but I'm sure that could be controlled. The east side of that building could be used for parking. So I think we need to consider it maybe as a multi-use space and look at it in that respect. Thank you.
Good evening. Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. And I hope this new tradition of remote access to the public is carried on to the new commission. I hear a lot of ideas and there's kind of a mix. I can't support moving the Safford House. Most of you would have to realize it'd have to be cut, have to be cut apart. And move from that area would be hard. To me, and I've been to the Safford House, it's beautiful, historic. I know a number of years ago, we put together a walking tour map of all the historic areas. So the Safford House is only maybe three blocks from the property we're talking about. So maybe it's a lack of marketing as far as how to get people aware of it and go to it versus us having to move the house to the top of the hill. Hate to say it, compare it, but look at the need and what they did with their Edgewater Park downtown on Douglas and Main Street. It's huge open space and up on the east side, they have kind of like a stage setup area. Provides for weddings, events, things, proms. How many times you drive by and all the kids are hanging around down by the steps and all that kind of, let's say, maybe a safety issue. So you provide an area. We already redid Center Street to redo the parking. I think we have a lease with the, that bank fitness place for parking over there. So it's not so much a parking issue. So you open space, you have some sort of a, like we did, we visioned out at the beach, the pavilion. So you can have music events and the music would cascade down the bayou. You can have your special events, but then you still have enough open space to use that. So I'm glad to hear people are really realizing the value of open space and parks because one of my things along this journey is Tarpon Springs is missing out on their ecotourism. How many people we see now hanging around the bayou wanting to see manatees? We've got North Anclot River Park that's kind of neglected out there, but it's beautiful. You can walk through trails. There's some eagles nests up on the power poles. Anderson Park, Howard Park, Booker Park, all these parks. Where water system, we don't market ourselves to these advantages we have. And so to me, maybe we need to look at how we compositively put all these things together. But as far as this property, I think I've shared my thoughts on that. But moving the Safford House is, would be a very huge logistical decision. And once you start going down that road, you're going to find yourself coming up against unexpected costs and issues, which no matter how much you set the budget for, you're going to have to go through with it. So even if you set at 300, 500, and you're going to be coming back to the board asking for borrowing money from another fund to finish that project, which really isn't on our priorities. Thank you.
My name is John Saxer. I sometimes live at 58 West Center. I lived in the Safford House. With all due respect to the Safford House people, you can't move that house. I also work as a construction foreman. And by living in the house and by my experience in construction, it's going to be an override of any cost that we put up there. But I do have a better idea, an idea I think that would work. I'm an archaeologist and an astrophysicist. I worked in Tarpon Springs for 30 years. To me, Sarcon, Tarpon Springs is my dig as an archaeologist. About 20 years ago, I realized that Tarpon Springs had all the characteristics in Greek mythology to match up with the Hesperides Garden. Hesperides Garden is the Greek version of the Garden of Eden. It was built by Poseidon. I see evidence of the work of Poseidon in the area. There's an underground river from Lake Tarpon to Spring Bayou. The first thing Poseidon did when he got here to the earth was build an underground river and that river was called Alpheus. I went on to find over 2,000 ancient stone anchors along the west coast of Florida. Each of those stone anchors is as big as a pickup truck. And I believe there should be a park there where the community can come there and do whatever activities you do in a park. But if we were to put a stone circle there of ancient stone anchors with holes in them, a stone circle with 12 stones and one in the middle, we would get free publicity from all over the world because this would be the only stone circle in America. And it'd be the only stone circle in the world that is made up of entirely ancient stone anchors from the fleet of Atlantis. So the whole, so the whole world would benefit if we had a stone circle there. And they would benefit by the knowledge that it's true that Atlantis did exist along the west coast of Florida. Some of the stones I find are broken in half. The stone might be near the beach and then you might find the other half of the stone six to eight miles inland. So a great flood hit the west coast of Florida and went over the whole state of Florida. Took out all the plants on the landscape. Spring Bayou, if you turn it upside down, the map of Spring Bayou, you'll see the four figures of Eden. You'll see Poseidon over his son Atlas. Across from Atlas would be Hesterus, Atlas's wife and Poseidon's daughter-in-law. And behind Atlas would be the river dragon called Leyden. The word Euphrates means dragon-shaped river. If you look at the Euphrates River in Iraq, you'll see that it's not dragon-shaped. But if you look at the dragon-shaped river of the Anclot River in Tarpon Springs, you'll see that it is dragon-shaped.
Mr. Saxer, could you wrap it up, please?
I was just about to. I appreciate your time, appreciate the meeting. I think there should be a revote on the computers. And that's about it.
Thank you. Yeah, let's get through everybody else who wants to speak and then we'll have a short second.
Hello, my name is Phil Scandalaris. I'm at 935 Bay Shore Drive. I think we've come to like a once-in-a-life opportunity here. We have a chance to actually move the Safford House to this location. It is totally underutilized as Ms. Protos and Mrs. Vaticiotis said. And it's a, you could have the venues that you could have there for the Epiphany celebration. You could actually, that thing would be rented out, no, no problem. I think this, like I said, this is a once-in-a-life opportunity. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else who wants to speak on this issue? Seems a little formal. The other town hall meetings where I got, I think the last one we did was at the Sponge Docks. It was probably one of the best town hall meetings we've had. I've had many at the Sponge Docks and they're sometime volatile. But this was a great town hall meeting that we had there. We were ready to have one at, for the commissioners and then COVID hit. So I'm glad as hopefully COVID will let up and get us back to this thing that we can not only hold, you know, more like this, but also go to the areas of downtown, the docks. We love going to different neighborhoods and doing these things because I think we really lost a lot of that during COVID. So anybody else on this, on this topic want to come up and speak? Needed, you have one other thing you want to say real quickly?
The previous gentleman alluded that he lived in the Safford House. Mr. Manus came to me and I think you will remember, I know people in this hall will remember, when I was mayor and he introduced me to his partner in the painting business up north. And his partner had owned the Safford House and it was in bad shape. Very bad shape. And his partner had owned the Safford House and it was in bad shape, very bad shape. Vagrants had torn it up, destroyed a lot of it. And he said, I'd like to sell it to the city. I needed a tax receipt. So I came to the commission and I'm not telling you this to get credit. I want you to know what happened and how we got it and what we did. We came to the commission, had to fight Herb Elliott, our attorney, on buying the house. You remember. And finally got it passed and I forgot the amount, but it was a very insignificant amount. He wanted to get it off his hands. And Mr. Manus and I brought it forth two or three times and the commission finally said, told Herb we were going to buy it. We brought people in. Kathy Monahan can give you all the amounts that we got in grants to restore the Safford House. We got the vagrants out of there. The Terrapanis helped us with the, bring back the history of the Safford House so that we could have a nice museum, which had a lot of history behind it and what it stood We found the period, Mr. Terrapani went and searched for the period time of furniture that is in the Safford House now that they had during that time. It's a beautiful house. It's our historic number one house in Tarpon, like the White House in Washington. We should not destroy it. We should not give it up. It belongs on the Golden Crescent. Can't you imagine a Halloween night inviting the little children, come and spend the night in the house, call it the Historic Honored House on the bayou? Give them something interesting to live for in their community. We don't need a business there. We did not allow attorneys to put their law offices on the bayou in their big homes. We did not let the young doctor and his family have their medical office in that house. The only medical office was Dr. Clough and that he was a historic doctor here in Tarpon Springs many, many years ago. And we don't need businesses there on the Golden Crescent. That's not what it's about. We don't need a restaurant. We don't need an ice cream shop. We don't need a soda fountain shop. It's too close to our historic homes that we value very, very much. And people don't understand who have just come here, and I'm sorry to say this, the value of our historic district, the value of the history of Tarpon Springs, the value of the Saffords.
Ms. Protas is a little longer than a minute. I want to give you a minute to go, you're going a little longer.
No, it's true. You've got to understand, if we miss this opportunity to finish putting this house, to make the final facade on the Golden Crescent, we'll never regret, we'll never get it again. We've had movers look at it. Yes, it has to be cut, but they cut all the old houses that they moved and they're put back together to perfection. We can do it. We can raise the money. We can go after grants and we need to take this opportunity and say, yes, let's do it and let's save what we have of Tarpon Springs.
No, no, we're going to move on to the, John. John. Do I have to? We're not, John, John, please, let's get on to the next topic. You want to stay after we do the second? Again, we, we didn't want to, we didn't want to have a follow-up for, I didn't know it was going to be rebuttal follow-up. We're not going to, you know, we're not going to do this. This is a relaxed meeting. This is a city commission meeting, so we're not going to have all this back and forth. So if we're going, we're going to be. John. Chief Young, let's see. All right, let's get on to the next topic, which is something, I guess if you could say, some good things came out of COVID. I don't know if you can say that, but some money became available for cities, 12.4 million in fact, for the city of Tarpon Springs. This is by the, a dynamic that when this first came out that the cities were going to get the monies, all of us city managers got together because there was one problem with it. They didn't give us, the government didn't give us the criteria for the money. And we waited and we waited and little bits and pieces came out. Then some criteria came out and there were some pretty strict criteria for a city like Tarpon. It was pretty strict and there was a lot of things the money couldn't be used for. So we waited and waited and something I don't think I've ever seen with government, when the final order came out, it completely relaxed those restrictions. It gave a city's ability for cities like Tarpon Springs and others to claim 10 million of it as a loss of revenue, which would give us the ability to do anything we wanted with the money, not the strict restriction. So in essence, you've got 10 million you can use for the things that weren't on the list. Those very strict, like infrastructure, some very, very different things. It changed the, it changed from overnight at the final minute, it changed to be able to use, for instance, roads couldn't be done in the original one, to be done roads, sidewalks, that sort of thing. But it opened up. So it's very tough to do questions on this one when we come to the question portion because it went for some, some very strict requirements that we were going to ask the public for, to now expand it into a lot of areas where, where very few exceptions and, our finance director will talk about them in his short presentation, that the money can be used for what the community thinks it, it's most needed. And that wasn't very important for smaller cities like us. So let me go into the presentation. I just want to introduce that with the dynamics of this, this thing and I'll let you.
What are you doing? Good, Mark, keep going. Ron Herring, Finance Director. I just want to give a brief summary of the American Rescue Plan Act. It was a bill signed on March 11th, 2021. It was established to fight the pandemic and support families and businesses, maintain vital public services, build a strong, resilient and equitable recovery. The city of Tarpon Springs is to receive 12.8 million. We received the first payment of 6.4 million on September 15th, 2021. The second payment is supposed to come one year later, so we're estimating it should be right around September 15th, 2022. There's four categories of eligible uses. There's public health, emergency and negative economic impacts. There's premium pay, revenue loss and investments in infrastructure. And to go over the four categories in just a little bit more detail on the, number one, the public health emergency and negative economic impacts, for assistance to include public health, assistance to households, assistance to small businesses, assistance to nonprofits and aid to impacted industries. The second eligible use is premium pay for, to eligible workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 pandemic and such workers for the city as, such as healthcare, emergency response, sanitation, transportation and warehousing, city government workforce and medical testing. The third category eligible use was the revenue loss. Now, as the city manager was saying, we can use up to 10 million of the traditional, for any traditional government service, some of which include, you know, public safety, police, fire and other public safety services, parks, recreation and cultural, cultural services, roads, streets, sidewalks, city buildings, citizen services and environmental sustainability issues. And the fourth and last category was investments in infrastructure, which include water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure and broadband infrastructure. And some limitation, restrictions on the use. We cannot use it to pay interest in principle on any debt. We cannot use to replenish any rainy day or reserve funds. We cannot use to pay settlements or judgments. The timeline for the use of the funds, cost must be obligated by December 31st, 2024. All costs must be expended by December 31st, 2026. Funds approved to date, the Board of Commissioners has approved of the use of 1.1 million of the American Rescue Plan funds. That's leaving 11.7 million to still be allocated. And with that, I'll give it back to Ally on the poll question.
Okay. All right. Again, same instructions. You should be able to open up your phones again and get back on the website and it will refresh again once I make another question live. You might still be seeing the old question, but it will switch over. Again, watching at home, these will be available at the conclusion of this meeting. We'll reformat it so that you'll be able to take it at a later time and it'll be open until Tuesday, February 22nd, which is next Tuesday. All right. Anyone having issues at this time getting on the live polling? All right, we're going to go to the next question. Okay, question one. What eligible use of the ARPA funds is most important to you? A, public health emergency and negative economic impacts. B, premium pay for eligible workers. C, revenue loss for traditional government services. And D, investments in infrastructure. Okay, and this question is now live and it should refresh on your screen. Okay. Move on to the next one. Everyone having no issues so far? It will still let you put your answer in until I make the next question live. So if you're still putting your answer in, you'll have a couple more, well, a minute or two. No, if you're using the website, no, you just have to select the answer and it should highlight it and then you can switch it if you want to, but yes. Nope, no go. If you're texting, you have to enter to send the text. Okay. So for the next several questions will be asked, anytime that you're asked for your first choice, you'll also be able to provide your second choice on the next question. So when you see first, just know that you'll be asked for your second choice as well. Question two. If the funds are used for public health, emergency and negative economic impacts, which area is your first choice to spend them on? A, public health and/or public health facilities. B, assistance to households. C, assistance to small businesses. D, assistance to nonprofits. And E, aid to impacted industries. All right, and this question is now live. And again, you may have to scroll on your screen to see all of the answer choices. Okay. Go on to the next question. All right, now which area would be your second choice to spend funds on if used for the public health, emergency and negative economic impacts? These are your same answers, but A, public health and/or public health facilities. B, assistance to households. C, assistance to small businesses. D, assistance to nonprofits. Or E, aid to impacted industries. Okay, and this question is now live. Okay. If I'm going too fast and/or too slow, just let me know. All right, I'm going to go to the next question. It keeps moving. All right. Okay, question four. At this time, the city is not considering using the funds for premium pay for eligible workers. Do you agree with this? A, yes. B, no. C, undecided. And this question is now live. Okay, I'm going to go into the next question. Question five. And again, this will, you'll be asked your first choice and your second choice. So the first question is, if the funds are used on revenue loss for traditional government services, which area would be your first choice to spend them on? A, public safety. B, parks, recreation and cultural services. C, roads, streets, sidewalks. D, city buildings. E, citizen services. Or F, environmental or sustainability issues. And this question is now live. There are a lot of answers, so you may have to scroll to see them all. Okay, I'm going to go to the next question. All right, now which area would be your second choice to spend the funds on if used for revenue loss for traditional government services? Again, these are the same answers. A, public safety. B, parks, recreation and cultural services. C, roads, streets and sidewalks. D, city buildings. E, citizen services. And F, environmental or sustainability issues. And this is now live. Okay, go on to the next question. Question seven. If the funds were to be used on investments in infrastructure, which area would be your first choice to spend them on? A, water infrastructure. B, sewer infrastructure. C, stormwater infrastructure. Or D, broadband infrastructure. And. Water infrastructure. What, so water distribution, pipes, things of that nature, improvements. Drinking water, yes.
A lot of it with our cities, the old, older, changing out the older pipes for newer pipes.
Okay, next question. Which area would be your second choice if the funds were used for investments in infrastructure? A, water infrastructure. B, sewer infrastructure. C, stormwater infrastructure. Or D, broadband infrastructure. And this question is now live. Next question. For the specific area of sustainability, which area would be your first choice to spend the funds on? A, solar and renewable energy projects. B, shoreline protection, which includes seawall improvements and living shorelines. C, community service hubs or centers. D, conversion of septic to sewer projects. Or E, inventory or planning for urban tree canopy and environmental improvement projects. And this question is now live. Okay, we'll go on to the next one. For the specific area of sustainability, which area would be your second choice to spend the funds on? Again, A, solar and renewable, renewable energy projects. B, shoreline protection, which includes sea. B, shoreline protection, which includes seawall improvements and living shorelines. C, community service hubs or centers. D, conversion of septic to sewer projects. And E, inventory or planning for urban tree canopy and environmental improvement projects. And this question is now live. Okay. I believe that concludes these questions for the live poll. So you're done tonight with your phones, so you can put them away. Again, anyone that's watching at home, once this meeting is concluded, we will make it available for you to take at home at a later date until Tuesday, February 22nd. And with that, I'll pass it back.
Stay up, stay up there, Ally, because I want, I want to just do one more thing. I want to let, before we go to the traditional town hall and hear you, I want to tell you where, what we've done so far. First of all, our staff got together and did a list of projects that we thought were priorities. And I can tell you now that we're in the process of revising them, because those priorities were done when we thought we were gonna have the original rigid rules for the ARPA money. So we will be providing to the city commission some revised recommendations from a staff level. Our first step with getting citizens engaged, I want Ally to talk about it, because we're probably gonna open it up again with some new information and stuff. Talked about Connect Tarpon, and what we first did for the public to try to get some public engagement on these ARPA funds. Let them know about that, and so they can be watching for that to maybe come out again as we gather all this information.
Sure, so on the Connect Tarpon Springs Engagement Platform, we do have a page for the ARPA Funds Project. It's available on the homepage, where you can find the project. We'll also have the link available online, so you can access it easily. We initially put the information up that includes the list that Mark just described about the initial priorities from staff. And we asked people to provide their ideas. So it was an open-ended ideas board, where they could post what they think the fund should, or who, and what they think the fund should be used for. So right now, the ideas board is still live. It's still up there, so you can provide those open-ended answers. But as we go through this process, and if we want more public engagement through that site, we'll update it with the engagement tools. If you register on the site and also follow that project, and/or just register, you will receive a newsletter through email that just lets you know that something new is on the site, in case you're interested.
Thank you, guys, really want to tout that. We've, we've got, name some of the other things we have up there that we've asked for engage. This is gonna be very important in the future. If all the people who like to use social media, Facebook and stuff, if you tell them to please put their attention to this also, this is gonna be a major avenue for the public to get information to us about what you want. Tell them some of the other subjects that you've had up there for...
So we have a lot of our major projects and initiatives up there right now. So our comprehensive plan update, we have a page for that. The strategic plan process, there's a page. We have, actually, the Spring Bayou West Tarpon property that we talked about earlier today, that has a page on there as well. A lot of the sites have engagement tools, so it might be an initial survey, a quick poll, something to get some sort of feedback and input. As these projects develop, we're adding more engagement tools, maybe more in-depth surveys for people to participate in. Some pages we created for projects that have interest, so Manatee Village, for example, was one that we put up there as a developer-led project, but the developer was interested to see what the city and community wanted to see in that shopping plaza. So we, I think we got over, I want to say 120 ideas submitted for that, so it's been a really good tool. Not every engagement tool or survey requires you to register on the site, but the benefit to registering is that when we do have new projects or tools for you to participate in, we send out a newsletter, so you get an email that lets you know, hey, the comprehensive plan now has a live survey, or we have an upcoming public engagement site for the comprehensive plan. So that's the benefit of registering online, but again, it's not required to do so. But there's a lot on there. I think, oh, the adaptation and resiliency project for the historic district, that's a new one that just got posted as well.
Okay, that's great. Okay, now, now we'll go to the traditional town hall, and please come up and just give your name, and tell us what your ideas on expenditure of the ARPA money is.
Hi, Joanne Rich, 1005 Lake Avoca Place, Tarpon. First, thank you for having the town hall. I was in a meeting this morning with several people who said, you know, they wished there were more of these, and they couldn't be here tonight, but they were hoping that there would be others. One of the persons I talked to, we were talking about how great the new website is for input, but the marketing for that, we were thinking, you know, you all put around the city the marquees, and there could be a marquee few days where you're announcing that website, or also at First Friday, or something trying, or in the apartment context, apartment complex. The concern has been that the lower-income residents of Tarpon Springs are not getting their voices heard at some of these community-level decisions. And how we can get more people's voices heard is really important. So, working on that. And one idea that I didn't see on the slide, but I saw in, in the formal presentation on the website, was the expansion of the new building for the Cops and Kids program. And that had been talked about as a possible use, but I didn't see that as any of the options tonight. I understand that there's been some talk with a new building for them possibly over towards the Mears extension, behind where the school buses are parked. And if, if that is true, and that's in the works, I just think it's really important that we do something for the children of the community, so thank you.
And thank you, and really, under, under Citizen Services, that was kind of where, as we go on, that category will be under.
Nita Protus, again, 901 Bay Shore. The shoreline and seawalls, does that include down at Craig Park, where its sidewalk's beginning to fall again?
It could do any, it could include anything.
It can include that, okay. And can you expand a little more on broadband usage that has been on the list? Expand a little more on that. Exactly what all it includes.
Okay, I'll get some, some of the question, if there's questions, I'll get into them at, towards the end. And next?
Good evening, I'm Carol Rodriguez, I'm with the Tarpon Springs Merchants. The merchants would like to see some of... Oh, sorry. Hi, I'm Carol Rodriguez, I'm with the Tarpon Springs Merchants Association. The merchants would like to see a $200,000 advertising budget, so we could do billboards in the Tampa Airport, radio, and TV ads for Tarpon Springs. We would also like to see Tarpon Avenue have more lights, more electrical outlets for when we do do functions, our First Fridays, that we have better power along that area, also on Safford and Hibiscus. We would also like to see the bill, the land between Acropolis Meat Market and Court of Two Sisters turned into the event area, which we, the city has allowed us to use that for our First Fridays. We would like to see more parking. There's a lot next to ours that could be purchased. There's a lot on Gross and Tarpon Avenue that could be purchased. Maybe we could also purchase Mark Menace's property that's on Roosevelt to give more parking for the docks. And the docks would like to see more lighting. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Phil Scandalaris, 935 Bay Shore Drive. Mrs. Lacourse, I think this is a great idea that you had here, and you did, this is a, it's great to have citizen engagement. And I think of what the best use for the money, like what I'd like to see is to actually finish Bay Shore Sewer. We have been on septic for, I mean, just forever. And when you've actually had brown water come into your, come into your tubs, it's, it's very concerning. Like, it stopped off right at Theonidas House and the Andropolis House, with the new neighborhood that was done on West Bay Shore, and then they went straight to Seabreeze. I would love to redo my house and actually be on, like, and actually be on the sewer. I think in all of our residents have, we have some of the beautiful, like, most beautiful property I feel like in Tarpon. And we're still, I mean, we still have sewer, we still have septic. And we'd like, that's what I think would be best. And you actually had, at the BOC meeting, I saw that your staff had it first on the list, and I think they were right. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will probably be bringing that back a week from today, Tuesday. We'll be probably bringing the two items back that they paused, the city commission paused to hear some more citizen input before they decided the money. So you'll probably watch the agenda, it'll probably be on Tuesday night, those two issues that we were asked to wait on. So watch for that agenda to come out.
Hey, good evening, Phil Mangos here, from 911 Bay Shore Drive. I'd like to second, second those comments, being neighbors on Bay Shore. I'd like to add to that saying, if we're doing any, or if we're hoping to do any kind of efforts to improve the environmental aspects in the city of Tarpon Springs, this is, all of Bay Shore is, or most of it, is water-facing properties. And those septic tanks are, a lot of them are as old as the houses originally built there, 1950s and 60s. We're getting seepage of human waste into the, into the Anglo River here. So it would make sense in terms of priorities, if we're gonna like, pretty up seawalls and things like that, to think about like, actual, you know, biological, environmental impacts that are going on here. A lot of residents that are faced with either the need to upgrade their, their septic tanks, or doing construction where it's gonna be a necessity, they're gonna get pushed back from, from the Health Department, you know, not being allowed to install new septic tanks that close to the, to the river and everything. So it's putting a lot of residents there in a catch-22 situation. That's all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Craig Lunt, 743 Chesapeake Drive. This is more of a marketing comment than anything. We have Connect Tarpon Springs, which is a fantastic website for information and for interaction with our community. One of the things it isn't is well-known. If you go to our city website, it's, oh, I'm just trying it on my mobile phone, it's, it's a dig to find it. We need to highlight it right on our city page. Make sure that our citizens know when it's there. So when they go to CTS Florida, they find Connect Tarpon Springs, even if it's only a corner of, you know, of the, the screen or whatever, so they can click on it right away. It's not good enough to go to projects and then have to page over to Connect Tarpon Springs, it's just not...
Thank you.
Hi, Sherry Went. I'm a resident in, in Tarpon, and I'm on the Tarpon Springs Merchants Association Board. I, I have two totally unrelated items, but one for the, for the ideas for advertising, which we've been trying to promote, to get more advertising, so we can further our events, further Tarpon Springs being well-known, and people will come here and shop and, and visit. I would really like to see an actual real, I would call it a kiosk, not just a sign, but something that you can see in some of the cities around, that where they actually have a, a stat, something, an item, where you can, you can have a glass door, you can have boxes where you can put our event cards. And some of our cities really close to us have what they call a walking map, not just the little thing for your phone, and you can bring it up on your phone. But some people aren't really using their phone. They could get, they could come here, and they could actually look at what's going on, they could take a card, they could take a map, and then find the stores. And I think it's Dunedin that has a walking map, where you actually see the stores. It's really very popular. So I was gonna promote that we actually do more to get people involved in actually finding things, and knowing where our splash park is, and seeing it on a really pretty map. Something totally not related to the, our Merchants Association, but I know that the sept, the sewer lines are part of, one of the ideas that we might actually work with that. And I just wanted to pass on to the public, I do property management, and I do, I do commercial. And in all of the commercial, then I, I'm involved with a lot of the stores, the restaurants, the different places. And I never realized until I moved to Tarpon Springs, and I found out that they have very, very old septic sewer. All the sewer lines are really old. And I was, so when we have a big event, and, and everybody's using the restaurant and going into the restaurant, our, our sewer lines are so bad that it will back up into those restaurants. And that's happening a lot, but nobody actually realizes it. Even the, even one of our stores downtown just recently had a problem, and it's just a small little area where people are coming in to, to have wine and sit down. It's really a problem that's kind of a silent problem if you weren't a merchant, and you didn't, and you didn't own something in, or a business that actually... Because I've actually seen the city come in and camera the lines, and they're all full of holes and tree limbs. And if we don't do something, it may not be in our lifetime, but now's an opportunity with this money that is extra, that we could actually fix some of this for, I'm sure it's probably the same in the docks, but I know downtown, I've seen, I've seen what's underneath us. So I'm hoping that somebody really looks into that and, and works on that one. Thanks.
Thank you for having us, Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. I tend to agree that we should spend some money for infrastructure. We do need to get our to-do list in order. But when I look around this room, I see people, everybody was affected by COVID, there's no doubt about it. But I hope we take this in the right frame of mind. These are not the people in here that are super infected. The people that are not here are more affected than the ones that are here. And how I mean that is there are people that cannot find houses, rentals. They will be soon out on the street. As I'm going around knocking on doors, I see the condition of some people's homes. And all I can tell you is, there's been a lot of people that have suffered much more. The only way to find out who suffered more is to possibly see if we can set up some sort of an application to find out what the people have gone through. And to see if we can set aside some of the money to see how we can help them out. Whether that means their roof that's caving in, and it's gonna cause mold and mildew and everything else for them to live in hazardous areas. Or whether they can't pay an electric bill because they've lost a job, because their job involves being in front of the public, which we've shut down. There's just so many different avenues that we've been affected by that, that we don't even have a clue. So I think a, a good way to do this fairly would be to have people pretty much ask for money, like the PPP program that people put in applications, and see if we can help out the needy. Because it's just, it's a shame to see the condition of some people's homes when you walk around. So I, I don't know if we gave that any thought. I, I do want to work on the infrastructure. I know you have a laundry list a mile long, I'd like to see if we can knock that down some. I know we have sustainability issues. I know we have, you know, flooding problems. I'd like to try to see how much we can put towards helping out our fellow citizens and residents as well, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie Turner, 792 Chesapeake Drive. Yeah, thank you so much for doing this and having it with a Zoom option as well, I think that's fantastic. I see a lot of interconnection between a lot of these projects. So particularly when we're talking about, we have such a strong support for the feedback we've gotten for our environmental needs and sustainability projects, and addressing our roads and our sewers and our stormwater, these are all interconnected. Because, you know, for example, if we invest in our shoreline protection, that's gonna then be connected to our shoreline protection. So is there maybe a project that can have more of that holistic approach? And then also thinking, you know, I work in healthcare, specifically with mental health, and I know that it was... and I know that it was wonderful that you went ahead and approved the funding for our first responders, for our fire department, to get some additional mental health care support. That's the spirit of what this grant is, is because the things that they have seen during COVID are just unbelievable. So I'm so glad that we were able to do that. And in addition to that, I believe our hospital had made some requests and had presented that. So I'm not sure if that's still in play, and just, you know, for the record, that's the, you know, I work for the other hospital system, I don't work for Abbott. So I'm not up here advocating for my employer by any stretch of the imagination, but I am advocating for us to remember that investing in the infrastructure and investing in healthcare, I think they had a $1 million project for some kind of, and I don't want to misstate what their thing was, whether it was in an awning, which would help because there's a lot of structural issues that the hospital's facing. So, and thinking of those things, and also remembering when we're supporting our nonprofits, that in turn is providing assistance to those households, like what Mr. Eisner was saying. When we have families who are facing these very, very traumatic struggles, if we're supporting our local nonprofit organizations, they in turn are providing those much-needed services. So it's the, again, it's the interconnection there.
Thank you.
Good evening. Robin Sanger, 1630 Lonesome Pine Lane here in Tarpon Springs. It's wonderful to have this town hall here, and it's wonderful to hear all the different voices and input and feedback from people. I'd like to see more of this, and I'm kind of echoing what Jackie Turner said. I think that we have so many opportunities, it's hard not to think of how we couldn't address all of them in some way. I think the septic tank is extremely important, all forms of infrastructure, but also the human infrastructure, how we can support our families most in need, and how we can support that mental infrastructure, because so many people have been impacted by the pandemic, even as far as losing loved ones and having to cope with that, kids losing their parents or their caregivers. So I'd like us to take the broadest, most holistic approach that we can to this, and make sure that we're as responsive as we can possibly be to all the many needs that we have. Thank you.
Paul Robinson, 948 Bay Shore Drive. I want to thank you, as others have, for having this town hall. I think this is an excellent policy and process. In the list of proposed expenditures under ARPA funds, I believe I saw the number 10.5 million for seawall improvements or replacements. I would argue, again, that any man-made structures, seawalls, et cetera, be coupled with biologic solutions, either living shorelines or living seawalls. Both of those increase biodiversity, and both of those can, because of the population of organisms that will live in those structures, clean the water, and clean the water continuously, and it improves over time. In addition, living shorelines reduce wave action. So they reduce, unlike man-made structures that increase the destruction because of, they reflect wave action, living structures like shorelines reduce wave action and thus reduce the amount of damage to the man-made structures and to adjacent structures. In addition, living shorelines absorb carbon dioxide, quite a bit more carbon dioxide than any typical structures on land. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Just to address a little bit, talked about broadband was a major one that the federal government put out. We're still looking at from a city, a city aspect on a smaller scale, what, you know, the getting of the city into broadband stuff, we are looking at that right now. So that's one of the things that you'll be seeing in the future. You know, to what extent? Again, remember, this is for counties, for large counties, and a lot of different things that the government has said for this. So you will be seeing some as we look into, is there an aspect of small-city broadband assistance that we could do? We'll be looking at more of the smaller scale than the larger scale that some of the places are looking at. For instance, the ability to get schoolchildren, the ability maybe to, for school and for work, to get services and stuff. So we are going to be looking, but we're still in the research stages of that from the level and stuff. And one more time, is there anything, we've had a lot of great ideas here. Again, plenty of more opportunities, you still have time to add to the list. One of the funny things about when, when they did the Connect Tarpon, when I looked at the list of ideas, I said, oh, my goodness, those are, those ideas are so good, but they don't qualify for the money. Well, now that's changed. All of a sudden, they do qualify, along with everything you've said today. So this is going to be a continuing project. I want to thank, the commission is the one who directed me to do this, so I appreciate you thanking me, but also thank the city commission who directed me to have this. Thank goodness we're at a state where we can have it in person, and hopefully with some changes with what's going on with Omicron and everything else, hopefully we can have more of these. This was a great audience, you gave great input. This is what it's all about, and you're going to be seeing citizen engagement like this, and we'll be advancing the computerized further. We got a great test tonight, and I know there's a lot of more functions we can do with it, and we'll be breaking those out. So thank you, everybody, for coming, and I appreciate the input, and I'm sure the commission will, and more to come. Thank you. Thank you.